Members on. And here comes Ms. Hunter as well. That'll make seven of us. So that is enough for our call. Thank you all for jumping on with moments notice today. Secretary.
Apologies for being late.
We're just getting started. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Secretary, we will call this meeting to order. We have one action item.
Yes. Good afternoon and thank you, everybody, for jumping on. I know it was a little bit last minute, but we have a change of status in one of our charter schools that we wanted to bring forth through today. So I believe, I don't know if it's either Dustin Wood or Dr. Smith from the School Choice Office will kind of give an update and present the recommendation to the board. So at this time, I'll turn it over to them. I think I see Daryl there.
That's me, yes, sir. Hi.
Thank you.
I'm really small on the screen. Welcome, everybody. Again, thank you for taking some time out of your afternoon to help us with this particular presentation. Daryl Smith, Department of Education. As Secretary Leva alluded to, we have a change in status of one of our charters. The Arkansas Military and First Responder Academy is located in southwest Little Rock. We were notified earlier this week that they had their nonprofit status had been revoked, To Exalt Academy, the Board of AMFRA unanimously voted to approve the merger. The Board further requests that the current faculty and staff remain in place for the remainder of the school year in order to provide as little disruption as possible to the students and the parents. And so at this point, we had a CAP meeting earlier today at about 2:30. The CAP voted unanimously to accept this request from the Board from AMFRA, therefore transferring the charter to Exalt. And therefore, Exalt going forward with an affirmation vote from this Board will then become the operational entity over AMFRA going forward for the remainder of this school year. So that's kind of the high-level explanation. Certainly welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. To clarify, our Board today will be voting to review or not review the decision of the Charter Authorizing Panel.
I'm sorry, you were...
Is it breaking up? Our Board will be voting to review or not review the decision of the Charter Authorizing Panel?
Correct. To affirm, yeah, to affirm their decision, their recommendation to you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Board members, their recommendation is now linked on the ADE website agenda as well. Let's start with questions. If anyone wants to, you know, raise your hand or just turn your microphone off. Turn your microphone on to ask a question.
Ms. Woods.
Will the mission basically stay the same for that school?
I'm sorry, sir. You broke up just a little bit. Would you repeat the question?
Will the basic mission, the original intent, stay the same for that school?
No, sir. As the affirmation vote here, Exalt will be the operational entity there and therefore will have governance over what happens with that school moving forward. I do know that one of the things that they have agreed to as they were talking to the administration of AMFRA is that they will continue to have a JRO2C program. While it will not be a military academy as it exists today, there will be a JRO2C program as part of the CTE offerings.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Smith, this is Gary Arnold. Could you comment on the rationale for Exalt to be the chosen charter?
Yes, sir. So there are several opportunities there. Earlier this year, given some of the operational and financial issues that AMFRA was currently experiencing, they had begun some discussions with Exalt. Exalt is a, the Exalt campus is about a mile and a half from where AMFRA is anyway. So they're very familiar with the southwest Little Rock area. So they had already begun some conversations about what a possible merger might look like if we got down to that point. So when the opportunity came or when the time came that we needed to make a decision on who could, who we could transfer this charter to Exalt was, number one, a choice because of location, because they were familiar with that area. Number two, Exalt is also in the process with a strategic plan of opening a new high school. Their plans was to open a new high school in '26, '27, but since we had already reviewed some of their plans and they will be going before the Charter Authorizing Panel for their high school amendment on Thursday, that since they already had a plan for a high school, they were familiar with the area and a lot of, and I think earlier today, the superintendent said about 40% of the current enrollment at AMFRA graduated from the K-8 school in Exalt. And so there seemed like it was a natural fit because of location, because there had already been discussions, because there was already a process and already a strategic plan in place to start a high school.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Ms. Woods, I see you have questions.
I was also trying to figure out how to raise my hand on Zoom. Can you hear me, Dr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Was there any, are there any, and this may be a dumb question, are there any financial considerations, like grants or scholarships, that are tied to the charter school that we need to be considering moving over to the Exalt?
Not specifically.
Based on their 501(c)(3) status specifically?
Yeah, not specifically. As the, as Exalt takes over, they'll, since they'll be the operational entity that will take over, there won't be, there are some entities that will help them, I believe, through this transition phase over the next several months, knowing that there were some issues with AMFRA and some financial issues with AMFRA. And so there are some entities that are prepared to step in and help them through these next three months to make sure that there's no detriment to Exalt as it currently exists.
Okay. Ms. Keener, questions?
Yes, thank you. So this is news to us, but I imagine the Board has been aware for a while. Does this dissolve their current Board or was the decision in November, did that dissolve the Board? And does Exalt's Board take over? How does that work?
So, yes, as of the vote, as of your affirmation vote of this request, the current governance structure of AMFRA will no longer exist or will be dissolved. And the Exalt Board will basically be overseeing what happens at the AMFRA campus for the next several months and potentially moving forward from there.
Okay. And what about family communication? Is this going to be news to them as well or have they been aware?
So we talked to Mrs. Long, and she's actually on, the superintendent of Exalt is actually on Zoom, and I'll let, she could probably speak into this a little bit more, but I'll just give you the quick, the quick version of this, is that they have been in communication with the administration at AMFRA, and they have worked out a communication plan for both the parents, the students, the faculty, moving forward over the next several days to try to make this transition as smooth as possible. And I would refer to Mrs. Long on Zoom here for any further details.
Do you want to share anymore, Ms. Long?
To my, yes, ma'am. To my knowledge, communication with families has not happened prior to this. However, we did meet with the AMFRA leadership today, and as Mr. Smith said, we have an entire plan moving forward to make sure that there's one-on-one meetings, town hall meetings, staff meetings, and then one-on-one staff meetings to make sure that every staff member and every student knows that the full intention of Exalt is to honor the integrity of what they signed up for, making sure that there is a nice military track, JRTC track pathway in addition to other pathways to expand enrollment for the school and make sure staff members know that they're going to be supported, that they're going to be compensated on time, and that there won't be any lapse in any of their coverages.
That's great. Thank you. And you may have even answered my next question about enrollment. I understand, like you say, they signed up, understanding one thing. I was concerned this may lead to a mass exodus, and I wanted to be sure that there was a plan in place to help that transition. It sounds like you've got it covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other Board members' questions? Ms. Smith? Oh, Ms. Rollins, you go ahead.
Well, I want to make sure I understand. These students will be staying in the same facility through the end of the year, so there's little less disruption in their everyday. Is there anything that would be obvious to them that really is a change?
Not through the end of this year, other than additional presence and additional support on campus for the teachers' administration. All of the teachers will remain same teachers, educating the children, same leadership, and then our leadership in addition to their leadership, kind of working to make sure that the model is merged appropriately. What's working really well, we want to keep. What people have chosen and the students want, because it is a school of choice, we want to keep. And then what additional offerings we'll be bringing forward to expand enrollment. So as far as day-to-day, from now till the end of the school year, there'll be very little to no change.
Okay. Mr. Smith, are you the contact then? Will you be helping them with this transition?
Yes, ma'am.
How will you, what will you be doing?
So while we don't have any direct telling them what to do or not to do, we will make sure that, number one, that it's happening, that it's happening in the least disruptive manner possible, because certainly we want to make sure that the remainder of the school year for the AMFRA students goes well. We'd like to see this transition go as smoothly as possible. So we'll be in constant contact with Ms. Long and making sure that all the pieces are there, that they've got a good plan together to execute, and that it is the least disruptive plan possible for the current students at that school.
I guess I'm a little concerned that the parents really had no heads up on this, and it's, are you in the testing season right now? Is this going to...
The testing window, I think, just opened today, if I'm correct, or, and so, so that, again, that won't disrupt the students at all. Again, most of the students, for the most part, won't even know that there's been a change, other than the announcements that we're making as far as their day-to-day life and as far as what's happening in the school from a day-to-day perspective. What will change, obviously, is the administration, what they, you know, how they're going to begin to operate the school as they begin to look forward, and so starting to share the vision for what the school will be moving forward into '25, '26. But there will be very little disruption for the '24, for this particular school year.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate your reassurance. Thank you.
Ms. Hunter, questions?
Yes. So AMFRA goes through 12th grade, is that correct?
They are high school only, '9, '12. Yes, ma'am.
So they have some graduating seniors. So those graduates will graduate from where?
Well, they actually don't have any graduating seniors. This is only their second year in existence, so I believe they go up to 10th grade. They started in ninth, and I believe they have some ninth and 10th graders.
They do have 11th graders because of their enrollment shortfall, that they did enroll some 11th graders, but they don't have any seniors.
Okay. All right. Well, that answers then my second question. So I think, I think that's actually good, a good situation. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, I would like to ask about the finances. Will the, you know, any debts incurred by AMFRA translate to Exalt, and how does that process work?
I think at this time, I'd like to call up our legal counsel, Daniel Schultz, to kind of answer that question. We were addressing that earlier, and I think he actually probably has a better prepared statement for that.
Thank you, Daniel Schultz, Department Counsel. Prepared statements probably overstating it. But this is, this is a voluntary assignment. It's covered under the laws governing charter schools. And essentially, what is happening here is, you know, as of today, if you approve this measure, AMFRA will no longer exist as a public charter school in Arkansas. There is a mechanism where debtors to that institution can make a claim on debts incurred up to this point, so they can, it can be held, they can be compensated. But moving forward, it will, again, as a charter school, there will be no entity to have financial liability as far as the state's concerned. Does that answer your question?
Any funds from that school will transfer to Exalt?
Well, the funds will technically transfer to the Department. But again, Exalt could call on those funds as it needs to, to moving forward, and any funds in the future will be paid to Exalt directly.
Okay. So Exalt will have, you know, the existing funds necessary to pay the current teachers?
Yes.
Do you all have any insight into the revoking of the 501(c)(3) status? I know you talked a little bit at the charter meeting, but why that occurred and if...
We don't necessarily have all the specifics of it. We do know that it was beyond the November revocation, that it was poor management and some not filing the proper paperwork multiple years ago. So we think about, at this point, it looked like two years ago, that this has been going on for a multiple of years, and it just, and then over that time, it was eventually revoked, actually in November. So this was a ongoing problem. Why it didn't surface for the school sooner than that, we're not totally sure. We had a long discussion with the Board late Friday night and Sunday night. They admit their lack of oversight. They admit to the fact that there were some poor management, some poor financial decisions and operational decisions that were made with the school. But it seems like, basically, it was just, just poor management and not taking care of the things that need to be taken care of. We don't think there was any nefariousness or any intent to defraud or anything of that nature, but it was really just, just poor management.
Well, is it the agency's responsibility to do any more investigation into that management and any of their consequences or repercussions?
And we did. So like I said, the school's brand new. The school's only been in operation for seven, 18 months, 19 months at this point. And so as we were looking into the operational and financial deficiencies that they had, this is what surfaced, was that it, the, the revocation wasn't posted on the IRS website until March 10th of this year, so just less than a month ago was it, was it posted. And then by the time we were, you know, we were made aware of it within, I think, the last week or so, so within a couple of weeks of it being posted on the IRS website, we were made aware of it and thus were taking action at this point.
I do, I mean, that is hard, that it might have been a multi-year process. The leadership of AMFRA, are they resigning? Will they transfer over to Exalt? What does that look like?
I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit there. Would you run repeating?
The leadership of AMFRA? Will they, have they resigned? What's the situation?
At this point, no. Again, I think the idea for everybody, and I think certainly our desire, is that everybody, we try to not disrupt the system anymore, that it probably will be disrupted when the announcement actually comes out. I know that Ms. Long's working with the current, with the current administration to try to finish out this school year. Now, what that model will look like going forward into '25, '26, that's up to the Exalt, should this measure pass this today. But they are under the understanding that as of affirmative vote right now, that their Board authority and governance will be dissolved and that the administration superintendent, as far as making day-to-day and operational decisions, will no longer exist at that point and will then, they will answer to Exalt at that point. So they are very aware of those, of the change in governance and structure moving forward.
Okay. I think, I mean, I know that's not in the conversation this week, but down the road, having a little bit more information as to what happened, such that if something like this happens again, you all will be able to, you know, have that...
Absolutely.
...flag earlier on.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Like I said, it was something that, well, we found out within a couple of weeks, right? So as soon as it was posted on March 10th and that we were, at that point, we started taking action, sort of, because we found out, I guess, two weeks after that, so beginning of April. And then at that point, we were trying to figure out what the next step would be from a legal standpoint of if a charter no longer has nonprofit status, that at that point, what does that mean for a state and how does the state respond to that? And so, once we figured out what we needed to do and how we needed to best respond to help the school, to make sure we had, to make sure the school could continue operation, this is, this is where we landed. And so this is why we're having, we had the CAP earlier today, and then while you guys were asked to come back a little earlier for a special meeting.
Yeah. I think it's obvious that none of us like abrupt decisions, but it's equally obvious that there are very few options, if any, that could, that we have that aren't detrimental to the students.
Yes, sir. And I would agree 100%. This is certainly not anybody's ideal situation, and the swiftness of this action really is, was precipitated by the lack of, when we discovered that they no longer had a nonprofit status and then therefore, in order for us to continue to provide the services and make sure there was, like, in the least amount of disruption for the families and the staff at this school, this was the action that needed to be taken. But I would agree 100% that quick actions are never, usually never the best option.
Ms. Hunter, did you have some questions?
Well, it's really kind of, it's not a question so much as a comment or observation. It's more on the lines, Dr. Moore, of what you were suggesting about looking for red flags in the future. I'm also concerned, and I, and I heard that, you know, we don't think there was anything nefarious going on here, which I'm pleased to hear that. But I do think that we need to do, I'd like to have, ask the Department to do a real deep dive.
Sure.
Like a root cause analysis of how they lost their nonprofit status so that, you know, we can have some lessons learned to share, like create best practices to avoid something like this in the future.
Yes, ma'am, and we'd be happy to provide that, do that investigation and provide the results of that investigation.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, can you tell us, what's the enrollment at the school?
I believe it's 152, if I reminded correctly, the most recent attendance count.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for my colleagues on the Board, I've actually done quite a few 501(c)(3) filings as of late, and the IRS website is very, very behind on getting stuff posted. So this timeline actually tracks. I mean, I've got stuff that we filed back in November that still hasn't even been posted, yet we've gotten the approval for the 501(c)(3) stuff, not for charter schools, but just in general. So it wouldn't surprise me if it was revoked in November and then it just got posted in March.
And then, Mr. Smith, there's a Charter Authorizing Panel meeting later this week or next, where Exalt will be bringing...
The charter meeting meets on Thursday. It's this Thursday, and Exalt will be submitting for, to amend their current charter to add a high school to their current charter.
Okay. Ms. Long, do you mind to speak a little bit towards what that will look like now that you are looking to take on this high school first?
Yes, ma'am. Fast track, right? So we've been planning this high school for a while now. It's been a big demand from our current K-8. Many of our students, after they leave, have been asking us to create a high school. But we were waiting to create a high school until the opportunity was perfect, and we felt like the K-8 space, we had really mastered it and doing a really good job before we decided to move ahead. So after surveying families, working with the community and knowing the community, we created a pathway that includes opportunities for accelerated coursework and college AP courses, but then also some CTE offerings as well, specifically CTE offerings that our families have recommended. Interestingly enough, one of the, I think, number two recommended CT offering was nursing. If you go back to the original AMFRA first responder application, nursing was one of their large pathways as well. So we think it's a really nice merge between kind of what we're wanting and then what they're offering. There are some other things in their charter, their original charter, like an extended school year, extended school day, and different things that actually align up really well to what we currently do right now. So over the next few weeks, as we end the school year, we'll be meeting with the AMFRA team, their teachers, AMFRA families. We start those series of meetings actually today and then move forward, but really do a course analysis between what courses they're currently offering, what courses and pathways they currently offer, and what ones that our families are wanting, and then create a plan that is the best of both worlds for all people. So just different opportunities. And then also, by expanding the military pathway, we'll potentially, we'll draw in more students and then be able to increase enrollment. I know enrollment has been a really big struggle. I think actually Commissioner Smith said 153. I think they're actually down a little bit even from that now. So I think just expanding course offerings to be able to draw in more variety of students so that it can be financially sustainable as well.
Thank you, Ms. Long. It's a big ask for you all to take on a school with, I don't know, six, eight weeks left in the school year. So I know I can express appreciation for you all doing that. Do you feel that in doing this, it'll set, you'll be able to, you know, make the school your own within reason in the next school year? Will you be able to set your leadership and move forward?
I really appreciate you asking that question. And when I was first asked, although open-minded, I was worried a little bit about that. And then I walked into the school, and I walked the school, and around 40% of the children attending that school were my children from Exalt. And so then I was like, oh, I must do this because it's my children and it's their success, and I care about, you know, what they're doing and how successful they are in high school. So I'm really fortunate to be able to have the relationships with the children as well as their families. So I think that it's going to be a smoother transition than a different type of merger.
That's great. Thank you. Board members, additional questions or comments?
Just one last question. We've talked about the enrollment size. What is the size of the faculty and staff supporting everything at AMFRA?
I believe there are eight teachers currently right now, and there are several administrators that are also teaching classes. So that'll be something that I'll learn more about in the next couple of days on how they have it structured. I know that because of their enrollment shortfalls, they had to minimize staffing and be creative when there's only 100 and some students. You know, you have to be real creative with that. So that's something we'll look at. I am fortunate that we have several staff members at our K-8 that are high school certified. So hopefully, we can, you know, combine efforts and make sure it's really strong.
Board members, other questions or comments? Okay. So at this time, Mr. Smith, anything else from your agency?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. So we will, without further questions or comments, the motion would be to accept or deny the recommendation.
Thought it was... Review or not review?
To review or not review. Okay, that's, sorry, sorry. Thank you. I said it to clarify. It's review or not review. If it is reviewed, then it would come at the next scheduled board meeting to review it. To not review it means we accept the recommendation of the Charter Authorizing Panel.
That's not confusing at all, is it?
Yeah. I confused it, Mark, because I got confused for a minute.
I move to not review. I'll put forth that motion.
I'll second.
Also asking... Also asking, you know, Dr. Smith to provide an update in the future, kind of on what happened based on the investigation.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. You're ready for chairmanship. So a motion by Ms. Woods, not to review, which means that we are accepting the, would be accepting the recommendation of the Charter Authorizing Panel. There's a second by Ms. Hunter. Any questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Ms. Woods, thank you for saying that. I do think that it would be helpful at some point in the future to hear an update on how things are going. Ms. Long, we wish you all the very best and truly appreciate you stepping up at this time. I think it would be beneficial also longer term to hear some of the sort of understanding that the agencies come to as to what's happened to get to this point.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. With that, is there anything else from the agency?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, have a good rest of the day.
We will be adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.